Good evening. This regular meeting of April 10th, 2023 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Bradley.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Prohaska.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Sancy.
Here.
Whitman.
Here.
All right, we are welcoming some students for the Pledge of Allegiance. So come on in.
Hello, I'm Chase Lindenberg. I go to Table Mound, and I am in third grade.
My name's Brielle Ambrosi. I'm in fifth grade, and I go to Table Mound.
My name is Eliana Ambrosi, and I go to Table Mound, and I am in second grade.
Hi, my name is Leona. I go to Table Mound, and I am in third grade.
I pledge...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you. Good job, guys. Good job.
I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on March 20th, 2023, the special meeting of April 4th, 2023, as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, that brings us to a few board salutes. I think Ms. Jones can get us started.
Yes. All right, so a board salute goes to the Dubuque Senior High School Speech Team for its outstanding showing at the 2023 Individual Event All-State Speech Festival held on March 27th at the University of Northern Iowa. Students received 24 Outstanding Performance nominations for the festival, and the school earned the Iowa High School Speech Association Individual Event Sweepstakes Trophy, given to the school with the most nominations to the festival. Hempstead High School also had a student receive an Outstanding Performance nomination for the all-state festival. Congratulations to the speech teams for their outstanding performances, and hats off to our All-Staters.
Awesome.
Very cool. Thank you.
I have a board salute, and this goes to John Deere for the gift of 19 pallets of LEGO kits to enhance our STEM, which is science, technology, engineering, and math, efforts across the district's elementary schools. The donation is made possible by First Grant to Support STEM Education. We are thankful for the ongoing consistent support of John Deere in furthering our STEM efforts, and know that these kits have far-reaching impact on the district.
Awesome.
Thank you, John Deere.
Thank you.
The staff had a fun time playing with those.
Oh, really? Everybody's happy.
Yeah.
Ms. Bradley?
The Board congratulates our high school students from Dubuque Senior High School, Hempstead High School, and the Alta Vista campus selected to have their artwork featured in the Dubuque Community Schools and Dubuque Museum of Art High School Art Exhibit. It's a wonderful partnership we have with the museum of art, and to have this featured time for our high school students is wonderful. These students and their families will celebrate at an opening reception for the exhibit on Thursday, April 13th, from 4:30 to 6:30 at the Dubuque Museum of Art. And the exhibit will run, for those of us who can get there to enjoy it, it will run from now through Friday, May 5th, at the museum, and each Thursday is Free Admission Day. So mark your calendars for Thursdays. So we say bravo to our students for being selected for this exhibit, and to our art teachers across the district for their outstanding instruction of these students. Excellent.
Can't wait to go to that on Thursday.
I know.
Mr. Prohaska?
Yes, I have a board salute that goes out to the Washington Middle School Visual and Performing Arts Department, especially to Director Megan Schumacher. Their production of Pinocchio's Son was just terrific. Solos were great, costumes were great, the sets were great. They involve 150 students in this production, and they've been working on it since September. So this is kind of like their final performance, and they had to change the performance because of the weather. But I know there were several of the folks from the forum that were attending the performance as well, and it was really entertaining, and it was very well done. So thank you very much.
Any others up the table? Thanks, everyone. So that brings us to a public hearing on our proposed budget estimate for fiscal year 2023-2024, and I believe Mr. Kelleher is going to speak to us first.
Good evening, Board members, and Superintendent Hawkins. Tonight, the district is asking you to approve the budget for the fiscal year 23-24 school year, along with the levy rate proposed for property taxes, which is part of that budget document. So each year, the business office completes a little pamphlet that we put together that talks about the budget and as well as the levy rate. We put some facts and figures in there, some history on different pieces of financial information, and we also have some comparison to other districts. So we're going to spend a few minutes here talking about a couple of those different pieces of information in this document. So the first one I want to bring your attention to is on page four of that document, and it is our certified enrollment history for the last 10 years. As you know, certified enrollment is a very important piece of our funding. We take our enrollment times the cost per pupil to supply our upcoming budget for the next year. So you can see our history. We've been talking about that, the decline in enrollment, and for the future, it looks like it will continue to decline slightly. So we have to create some efficiencies in our budget because we're not receiving the same amount of funding as we have in the past. And as you know, we've received some federal COVID dollars over the last three years, and that's kind of helped stabilize our budget. But now those dollars will be ending, will be all spent by the end of this year. So going forward, we won't have that funding source to help stabilize our budget. Want to move to the next slide. So here is, you know, as I said, certified enrollment times what the state gives us per pupil is how we get funded. And this is the cost of increase from state supplemental aid. So they increase our cost per pupil each year by the percentage. And you can see for this upcoming year, they've actually increased it slightly to 3%. As you know, 3% is not anywhere near what inflation has been this past year. Inflation's run anywhere from 7% to 8%. So the funding is not matching what our current expenditures are, which creates the urgency -- I wouldn't say urgency, creates the necessity for us to start looking at efficiencies. We need to become more efficient with the dollars that we're receiving. The next slide, please. This slide is on page nine of your document, of this document, and it has the history of our levy rate. So again, we're asking you tonight to approve a $14.51 levy rate. So how does that compare to our historical levy rates? You can see 15, 20 years ago, the levy rate was up near $17, and over time, it's declined, and then gradually went up a little bit, and that has really leveled off the last five years, except for last year when we were able to decrease it down 60 cents. Well, now, according to needs that we have in the upcoming budget, and I'll talk about a little bit about those needs in a second, we have to raise it back up to the $14.51. But you can see, looking back over historical for the last four or five years, it's been right around that $14.50 amount for the last few years. So how does that levy rate compare to other districts? So we always put this in here. It's kind of a comparison of our levy rate to the other seven large urban school districts in the state of Iowa. And what I have to do is I have to use our levy rate that I'm proposing and comparing it to their levy rate for last year because their current levy rates aren't available when we publish this. But you can see Dubuque sits near, you know, the bottom half of all the eight schools, and it's significantly lower than the highest one at Council Bluffs. So as we compare ourselves to other districts, our levy rate is near the bottom of those eight schools. Let's flip to the next page, if you would, please. It's on page 10. So this is the document that was in the paper that we published for this meeting. It's our budget for the upcoming school year, and it has about $200 million, a little bit less than that for total expenses. Now, that's all funds. It's not just the general fund. It's the management fund, Pebble Fund, Debt Service Fund, Sales Tax Fund, et cetera. So it's all our funds that we have to legally budget. And at the bottom of that, it shows the levy rate that we need to generate enough revenue for that budget. And that's the $14.51 that we're requesting. So how does that levy rate impact property taxes? So if we go to the next one, we always put this in every year, is to kind of show the levy impact of the current rate on different types of property. We start off with the residential property. And I know everyone has been receiving those letters from our county assessor about increases in assessed value. Assessed value is different than taxable value, so I want to make that statement upfront. And also, with regards to those letters, that assessed value is not for this levy rate, it's for the upcoming 24-25 school year. So it's not impacting the current levy rate that we're asking you to approve tonight. That'll come in the future, that increase. But again, we want to talk about assessed value is different than taxable value, because you can see in this document, there's a factor that's put into assessed value for residential property called the rollback. And that number takes the assessed value times that rollback number to come up with the taxable value. Okay? So you're not paying 100% or paying your levy rate based on assessed value, it's on taxable value. And knowing what the state has done with the assessed values, my guess is the rollback number, and it's just a guess at this point, will go down next year because the assessed values went up. And across the state, they have to limit that to about 3%. So I don't know, how it affects an individual property payer, can't tell right now, but across the state, the limit will be about 3% in total taxable value for next year. Okay? So for our levy rate that we're asking for this year, you can see it affects the average residential property in the city of Dubuque of about $63, $64, a little over $5 a month. And again, that's just the school portion. The city also has a piece, the county has a piece, NICC, all those taxable bodies are included in the total property tax rate that you pay on your taxable value of your homes. But for the school portion, on the average piece of property, it's going up $63 for the next year. We also use that levy rate to compare how it affects both industrial and commercial properties, and that's on the next slide, please. And what the state did is they changed the formula for that. So there's some new factors that were put in, and for both of those properties, the actual value or the actual tax that they're going to be paying for the school portion went down. Again, that's because they changed how that calculation is done, but that $14.51 amount is actually going to have a lower tax effect for them than it did the prior year. So I went over that pretty quickly. Does anyone have any questions on that?
So in a nutshell, what the school district is doing is returning back to the previous year's taxing rate.
Correct. It was $14.55 two years ago.
Right.
And the part of the reason that we're increasing it, some of it has to do with our management fund, which pays for our insurances, our property liability, and work comp. And we have received word that there will be some rather large increases in both the work comp and the property and liability. So that is a part of the reason to we're increasing the levy rate. And also, we wanted to stabilize that levy rate going forward. That's our plan, by changing it to the $14.51. Based on that history, we want to hover around that dollar amount. So hopefully, going forward in the future, we'll be able to maintain a levy rate right around that same level, $14.50 level.
So in terms of what the school district is doing by returning to the previous year's taxing rate, is that the part that will be about the 3% increase, or is that the part that's the about $60 a year that will be greater on the average house?
The 3% piece applies to residential taxable value across the state.
Everything.
Right.
Okay.
So it's, and again, it's only residential, it's not commercial or industrial. So again, across the state, it doesn't, can't tell you what the individual property tax owner will be, but hopefully, if you're in the average area, it'll only go up about 3%.
And those who have received the new assessed valuation know that with the rollback, if I'm understanding it correctly, it's their tax, we're taxed on about half.
Right now, it's about 54%. My guess is that will drop significantly down to a 45, between 45 and 50% number. So they take that number times your assessed value to come out to your taxable value, which is what you pay that levy rate on.
Which is where that 3% limit comes in.
Right.
3%. 3% state law, is that correct?
I don't know if it's a law, but I know that's what they have, I believe it is a law, that they try to average between farm and residential, that they only go up a maximum of 3%, the taxable value, in a year.
So the $5 per month that you mentioned, that's on a $175,000 home, roughly, or something like that?
I think it was about $160,000 in there, Jim. What's the average property?
Yeah, 160.
160.
160. Yeah. Thank you.
Well, one of the reasons we would always, so like, if you looked back at the history, and it was up really high, and then we brought it down, because we are not allowed to spend beyond what the authority is. So our philosophy was to no longer continue to collect dollars that we cannot spend.
Correct.
So that's why it came down for many years, and then, as it was needed to be able to go back up with spending authority, from what we were able to collect and what we needed to keep in the reserve, it went back up, but it stayed pretty steady, other than anytime we can't spend beyond what we should have within our reserve, we would lower it.
Correct.
And so we're just getting back to a point where it is very, can be very steady going forward.
And those rules apply to the general fund, which is a majority of the levy rate.
Right. Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the budget estimate and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the budget estimate and authorize payment of legal notice publication costs to the Telegraph Herald. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, and thank you to Kevin and his team for putting all of this together and making it accessible and understandable for us and for the public. This is a really good document, so, and it's available on our website, I believe.
It will be.
It will be. So, you know, the public has access to it, and it's helpful, I think, to take a look and see some of this history and understand how schools get funded. It's complicated, but Kevin makes it understandable for us, which we appreciate.
I move the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So we're going to start our public forum, our visitors forum, with a what's going well report from Matthew Hall.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. My name is Matthew Hall, principal at Table Mound School, and I'm here just to highlight a few of the things that are going well at Table Mound, because there are many. I want to start by talking a little bit about our eye-ready assessment, which is new to us this year. We saw some tremendous growth between fall and winter scores, anywhere between 1% to 200% growth for some of our students, which was a celebration for sure. This assessment gives us more diagnostic results in both literacy and math, as opposed to what we've had in the past. So teachers are excited, they have the opportunity to really know what their kids know. So we look forward to our spring testing window and looking forward to seeing that growth from fall to spring. Also, we're in our first year of implementation of our second step social-emotional material curriculum, and it's been exciting to see how that has taken place at Table Mound. We have morning meeting each day, Monday through Thursday, and that time is set aside for those particular lessons, those topics of conversation. And when I walk around the building, seeing staff use the videos and the cards, the terminology, if I work with a student, I can say, what are the steps to calm down, and they can tell me. And so that's been really great to see how that's integrated into our building, not only at the classroom level, but at the building level through school-wide announcements and assemblies. Sometimes you have kindergartners bobbing down the hallway singing the songs, and then everybody's singing the song. So that has gone very, very well. So we're excited to see that through for the rest of the year and moving forward also. April will mark the one-year anniversary of us starting our food pantry at Table Mound through a partnership with St. Stephen's Food Bank. That has been a resource that our families have not had access to as far as a place that's close proximity to where they live. So being able to have that as a resource to the southern part of our county and city has been really great. That need unfortunately has increased. We've gone from six families typically, last month, we were about 22. But it's also a positive thing to have that resource for those families, because obviously there's a need there. So we're happy to have that, and we do that once a month. Also, our parental involvement has rebounded after COVID. That has been one of the things that we've really been focusing on. How do we get our families back? How do we make school that welcoming place again? We've already had 20 individuals volunteer for our Fun Day, which isn't until June. So people are excited and ready to get back, and we're happy to have people back at our building. And finally, we are excited that over the last four weeks, we have welcomed 10 new students to Table Mound. So our enrollment is up by 10 from four different states, all different grade levels. So we are excited that we have those new students starting at Table Mound. So those are just a few things that are going well at Table Mound. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else who would wish to address the board can do so at this time. We ask that you state your full name, your connection to the district, and that you limit your remarks to three minutes.
I move the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda.
I move the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there any item a board member wishes to have pulled? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, we are to our Facilities and Support Services Committee report from Mr. Prohaska.
Thank you. Our Facility Support Services Committee met last Monday, and we discussed a few items. I'll go through some of the things here, and then I have a couple of motions here to make as well. We discussed the professional purchase of notebooks and mini desktops for staff. We did approve that on our consent agenda. We will have Brian come up in a little bit and review through the employee agreements, then had an update on the district projects, the senior higher addition renovation phase two. The project is roughly 78% complete, and it's on budget, and projected completion is estimated in September of 2024. Ken Johnson also updated the committee on the furnishings from the initial order. They included new furnishings for 19 classrooms. We will discuss, there'll be a motion on the Hempstead intercom replacement coming up in the central kitchen, and the Hempstead High School freezer replacement, as well as the Dalzell field. We also discussed the Roosevelt Middle School foot roof replacement. The work will start here on June 7th, right after school gets out. Likewise, the Eisenhower Elementary School mechanical system replacement will start on June 7th. The transportation fuel system replacement will begin in late June with an August to early September deadline or completion date. The Sageville Elementary Solar Project was recommended that we void the bid and rebid the project without having the battery purchased. Hopefully, we will get more bidders this time around. Then the Lincoln Elementary School Outdoor Wellness Project is still on track. The project will go out to bid in November. The Rob Powers is still looking for some grants and other sources of funding for the project. Then Kevin reported to us that our synergistic person, Abby Homan, has found new employment. So they'll be looking for somebody new. But on a good note, we found out there's a 4% decrease in usage in our spring break this year compared to last year. Then we had a presentation on the middle school consolidation plan by Brad Leeper, and basically, they are the architects on the committee, and they brought us estimated project costs for the GEO bond, for Washington Middle School construction and demolition, air conditioning in the remaining buildings, which are Bryant, Marshall, Hoover, Alta Vista, Irving, and Lincoln, as well as a geothermal project, the Ball Field construction, and the storage and concessions construction, as well as the Eisenhower Gym Project and site acquisition for future elementary schools. Then we had a presentation by Tim Oswald of Piper Sandler regarding the financing of this project, and basically gave us two options. Option one was to provide a combination of general obligation bonds and save funds, and the other option was to provide general obligation bonds only and no save funds. His recommendation was that we go with option two, which was to go with the general obligation bond and no save bonds, with the intent that down the road, in terms of interest costs, I believe we could save in the neighborhood of $8 to $9 million. So, and then also certified budget proposal, which was given by Mr. Keller so eloquently. Just a little bit, just a little review about that. As Tammy said, we're down to where it was two years ago, but we had to bring it up. Okay, that's kind of the facilities report. Brian now is going to give us a little update on the background on the employee contracts.
Good evening. Brian Cool, Chief Human Resources Officer for the school district. I'm happy to report that the district has come to a contract agreement with the teachers' union for the 23-24 school year with a 3.04% total package increase, which equates to about a $700 increase on the base wage. We have increased the number of family illness days from six to seven. We have also come to an agreement with the custodians for the 23-24 school year with a point, or a 3.04% increase to the package. We added Juneteenth as an official holiday as well, and we increased family sick days, sick leave from six to seven days for that group as well. Currently, we are still in negotiations with maintenance employees, and we opened this week with the remaining four groups. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, now I have some motions to make here. I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the custodial employees as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Dubuque Education Association. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. If anyone has public comments related to the certified budget proposal, we would entertain those at this time.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the budget estimate for fiscal 2023-2024 as published.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the budget estimate for fiscal year 2023 to 2024 as published. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, and thank you to Kevin and his team for putting all of this together and making it accessible and understandable for us and for the public. This is a really good document, so, and it's available on our website, I believe.
It will be.
It will be. So, you know, the public has access to it, and it's helpful, I think, to take a look and see some of this history and understand how schools get funded. It's complicated, but Kevin makes it understandable for us, which we appreciate.
I move the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So we're going to start our public forum, our visitors forum, with a what's going well report from Matthew Hall.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. My name is Matthew Hall, principal at Table Mound School, and I'm here just to highlight a few of the things that are going well at Table Mound, because there are many. I want to start by talking a little bit about our eye-ready assessment, which is new to us this year. We saw some tremendous growth between fall and winter scores, anywhere between 1% to 200% growth for some of our students, which was a celebration for sure. This assessment gives us more diagnostic results in both literacy and math, as opposed to what we've had in the past. So teachers are excited, they have the opportunity to really know what their kids know. So we look forward to our spring testing window and looking forward to seeing that growth from fall to spring. Also, we're in our first year of implementation of our second step social-emotional material curriculum, and it's been exciting to see how that has taken place at Table Mound. We have morning meeting each day, Monday through Thursday, and that time is set aside for those particular lessons, those topics of conversation. And when I walk around the building, seeing staff use the videos and the cards, the terminology, if I work with a student, I can say, what are the steps to calm down, and they can tell me. And so that's been really great to see how that's integrated into our building, not only at the classroom level, but at the building level through school-wide announcements and assemblies. Sometimes you have kindergarteners bobbing down the hallway singing the songs, and then everybody's singing the song. So that has gone very, very well. So we're excited to see that through for the rest of the year and moving forward also. April will mark the one-year anniversary of us starting our food pantry at Table Mound through a partnership with St. Stephen's Food Bank. That has been a resource that our families have not had access to as far as a place that's close proximity to where they live. So being able to have that as a resource to the southern part of our county and city has been really great. That need unfortunately has increased. We've gone from six families typically, last month, we were about 22. But it's also a positive thing to have that resource for those families, because obviously there's a need there. So we're happy to have that, and we do that once a month.
Year, we saw some tremendous growth between fall and winter scores, anywhere between 1% to 200% growth for some of our students, which was a celebration for sure. This assessment gives us more diagnostic results in both literacy and math as opposed to what we've had in the past. So teachers are excited. They have the opportunity to really know what their kids know. So we look forward to our spring testing window and looking forward to seeing that growth from fall to spring. Also, we're in our first year of implementation of our second step social emotional material curriculum, and it's been exciting to see how that has taken place at Table Mound. We have morning meeting each day, Monday through Thursday, and that time is set aside for those particular lessons, those topics of conversation. And when I walk around the building, seeing staff use the videos and the cards, the terminology, if I work with a student, I can say, what are the steps to calm down? And they can tell me. And so that's been really great to see how that's integrated into our building, not only at the classroom level, but at the building level through school-wide announcements and assemblies. Sometimes you have kindergartners bobbing down the hallway singing the songs, and then everybody's singing the song. So that has gone very, very well. So we're excited to see that through for the rest of the year and moving forward also. April will mark the one-year anniversary of us starting our food pantry at Table Mound through a partnership with St. Stephen's Food Bank. That has been a resource that our families have not had access to as far as a place that's close proximity to where they live. So being able to have that as a resource to the southern part of our county and city has been really great. That need unfortunately has increased. We've gone from six families typically last month, we were about 22. But it's also a positive thing to have that resource for those families because obviously there's a need there. So we're happy to have that, and we do that once a month. Also, our parental involvement has rebounded after COVID. That has been one of the things that we've really been focusing on. How do we get our families back? How do we make school that welcoming place again? We've already had 20 individuals volunteer for our Fun Day, which isn't until June. People are excited and ready to get back, and we're happy to have people back at our building. And finally, we are excited that over the last four weeks, we have welcomed 10 new students to Table Mound. So our enrollment is up by 10 from four different states, all different grade levels. So we are excited that we have those new students starting at Table Mound. So those are just a few things that are going well at Table Mound. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Anyone else who would wish to address the board can do so at this time. We ask that you state your full name, your connection to the district, and that you limit your remarks to three minutes.
I move the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda.
I move the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there any item a board member wishes to have pulled? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, we are to our Facilities and Support Services Committee report from Mr. Prohaska.
Thank you. Our Facility Support Services Committee met last Monday, and we discussed a few items. I'll go through some of the things here, and then I have a couple of motions here to make as well. We discussed the professional purchase of notebooks and many desktops for staff. We did approve that on our consent agenda. We will have Brian come up in a little bit and review through the employee agreements. Then had an update on the district projects, the senior higher addition renovation phase two. The project is roughly 78% complete, and it's on budget, and projected completion is estimated in September of 2024. Ken Johnson also updated the committee on the furnishings from the initial order. They included new furnishings for 19 classrooms. We will discuss, there will be a motion on the Hempstead intercom replacement coming up in the central kitchen and the Hempstead High School freezer replacement, as well as the Dalzell Field. We also discussed the Roosevelt Middle School foot roof replacement. The work will start here on June 7th, right after school gets out. Likewise, the Eisenhower Elementary School mechanical system replacement will start on June 7th. The transportation fuel system replacement will begin in late June with an August to early September deadline or completion date. The Sageville Elementary Solar Project was recommended that we void the bid and rebid the project without having the battery purchase. Hopefully, we will get more bidders this time around. Then the Lincoln Elementary School Outdoor Wellness Project is still on track. The project will go out to bid in November. The Rob Powers is still looking for some grants and other sources of funding for the project. Then Kevin reported to us that our synergistic person, Abby Homan, has found new employment. So they'll be looking for somebody new. But on a good note, we found out there's a 4% decrease in usage in our spring break this year compared to last year. Then we had a presentation on the middle school consolidation plan by Brad Leeper. And basically, they are the architects on the committee, and they brought us estimated project costs for the GEO bond, for Washington Middle School construction and demolition, air conditioning and remaining buildings, which are Bryant, Marshall, Hoover, Alta Vista, Irving, and Lincoln, as well as a geothermal project, the Ball Field construction, and the storage and concessions construction, as well as the Eisenhower Gym Project and site acquisition for future elementary schools. Then we had a presentation by Tim Oswald of Piper Sandler regarding the financing of this project, and basically gave us two options. Option one was to provide a combination of general obligation bonds and save funds. And the other option was to provide general obligation bonds only and no save funds. His recommendation was that we go with option two, which was to go with the general obligation bond and no save bonds with the intent that down the road in terms of interest costs, I believe we could save in the neighborhood of $8 to $9 million. So, and then also certified budget proposal, which was given by Mr. Keller so eloquently. Just a little bit, just a little review about that. As Tammy said, we're down to where it was two years ago, but we had to bring it up. Okay, that's kind of the facilities report. Brian now is going to give us a little update on the background on the employee contracts.
Good evening. Brian Cool, Chief Human Resources Officer for the school district. I'm happy to report that the district has come to a contract agreement with the teachers' union for the 2324 school year with a 3.04% total package increase, which equates to about a $700 increase on the base wage. We have increased the number of family illness days from six to seven. We have also come to an agreement with the custodians for the 2324 school year with a point or 3.04% increase to the package. We added Juneteenth as an official holiday as well, and we increased family sick days, sick leave from six to seven days for that group as well. Currently, we are still in negotiations with maintenance employees, and we opened this week with the remaining four groups. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, now I have some motions to make here. I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the custodial employees as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the custodial employees as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Dubuque Education Association, which are teachers, counselors, and nurses as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Dubuque Education Association, teachers, counselors, and nurses as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the final acceptance of the Hempstead Intercom Project and authorize payment of final project cost to CEC Communications Engineering Company in the amount of $12,788.29 in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the Hempstead Intercom Project and authorize payment of final project cost to CEC Communications Engineering Company in the amount of $12,788.29 in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to point out, this has been a two-year, two years, two years in the making, and mainly the delay was due to supply delays.
So we're happy that that one is wrapped up.
Wrapped up. Very good.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the Central Kitchen Mechanical System Project and authorize payment of final project cost to Ports and Construction, Inc. in the amount of $71,790.75 in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitting, submitted authorizing resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of Central Kitchen Mechanical System Project and authorize payment for final project cost to Ports and Construction Incorporated in the amount of $71,790.75 in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution. Is there any discussion?
Again, this project was delayed a little bit, but it's finally done. Only took about a year.
Only a year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the Hempstead High School Kitchen Freezer Replacement Project and authorize payment of final project cost to Tricon Construction Group in the amount of $21,512.63 in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in submitted authorizing resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the Hempstead High School Kitchen Freezer Replacement Project and authorize payment of final project costs to Tricon Construction Group in the amount of $21,512.63 in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution. Is there any discussion?
That makes three projects for Hempstead that are final.
And this last one, I believe the freezer came from somewhere in Europe. I'm not sure. So that's why it took a little while.
A while. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Origin Design Company for the Dalzell Field scoreboard replacement project in the amount of $25,800.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Origin Design Company for the Dalzell Field scoreboard replacement project in the amount of $25,800. Is there any discussion?
I believe this scoreboard's been there for the, ever since Dalzell Field was renovated, which is close to 10 years, I believe. And I know there have been some issues with it.
12 years.
12 years, is it? 12 years? Wow, time goes by. Anyway, I know there have been some issues with it, so it's time for replacement.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
And finally, I move that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report. You, we already, you're coming again to talk to us, Kevin? Two Kevin talks in one meeting?
Kevin, we like you.
Just a couple of things I want to point out to you, actually four, for the budget report. One is in the general fund expenditures, and this is on page 90 of your packets. If you take a look, we are three-fourths of the way through the school year. March 31st was the ninth month. When you look at the total year-to-date expenditures, 89.4 million, and the encumbrances, which are invoices or salaries of benefits we have yet to pay, that's about 49 million. You add the two together, we're at 138.4 million, currently looking for a year-end total. Now, that will increase because we do have some additional expenses that'll pop up that aren't on here in the next three months. But what I want to say is that is quite a bit lower than what we had projected earlier in the year. So that's good news for our unspent balance. And as I mentioned earlier, with the federal funds, it's helped stabilize that. So when that goes away, we'll have to look at really creating those efficiencies. So, and I think it shows that we've actually started that process this year if we end up lower than what we projected the total expenditures to be. The nutrition fund, I've talked to you earlier other quarters about that. We continue to monitor that. But as of March 31st, it still has a positive balance. We were concerned, if you remember, because of the change in the reimbursement rate, they got rid of some of the rules that were in fact during COVID, which also drove down participation. You know, everyone had a free meal previously during the COVID time. They took, got rid of that rule, went back to the old rules for eligibility. But the good news is, we're maintaining a good positive balance in the nutrition fund. It hasn't hurt us as much as we thought it would. Another one is sales tax fund. If you look at the balance, it shows about a $3.8 million over expenditure. The reason for that is it includes all of the senior project in that encumbrance total. The PO is in there for the whole project. We expect $5 to $6 million to be paid out after the end of this fiscal year. So if you were to add that back, we would be still underspent from what we had budgeted. And then on the Pebble Fund, it's the same thing. It's about $3.6 million in the hole, and that is because we've put into there our contracts that we just talked about, the Roosevelt Roof, the Eisenhower Project, also the over transportation, that project. Those are all have been encumbered because we've signed contracts on those, but they won't play, take place until next year. And that's about 4.8 million. So if you were to add that back, it would not be in the deficit. We'd have a positive balance. So that's all I have for tonight, unless you have any other questions.
So relative to the COVID funds, we're done, right?
We all spent, I should say all, most of them will be spent by the end of this fiscal year, yes. We have one small project that still has an extra year.
And our efficiencies are compensating for that decrease of funding.
That's the plan, yes, going forward.
Thank you, Kevin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Prohaska. That brings us to the Education Programs and Policy Committee report from Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Dr. Parks. It is, the board has two work committees. You heard Mr. Prohaska's report of the Facilities and Support Services. This is the other one, which is Educational Programs and Policies. So we sort of break our meeting into those two different parts. The first part brought us four different pieces of information about what's happening in our district that's very helpful to the board to get inside of the programming parts of the life of the district and to have opportunity to have discussions around that programming. So the first, we were delighted to have Amy Unmack, who is the Executive Director of the Foundation for Dubuque Public Schools, come and talk with us and give us an update on things. I learned, I didn't know, that the district receives back from the foundation's fundraising efforts between $150 and $200,000 annually in funding to help with the programming for our students. Amy has done a superb job in her five years as Executive Director of the Foundation for Dubuque Public Schools, and we learned sadly that she and her husband are moving to Kansas City. And so we had an opportunity to thank her. I'd just like to say publicly what a great job Amy has done. She has really matured and grown the foundation, I think, in a lot of ways, one of which came before the board for consideration, and that's a memorandum of understanding between the foundation and the district that brings us to a level of commitment that I think is a very helpful thing for us going forward. So we thank Amy, we honor her for her work, and we look forward to hearing who her replacement will be. That won't, we won't become, have that information for a while yet. That's in process now. Secondly, at the, in terms of information, we heard from Lisa Tabacorst, who is the Executive Director of Elementary Education. She brought us information about our before and after school programming at our 12 elementary schools. There was a time when we had before and after school programming in all of our elementary schools, and that has not been possible for a while. And to Lisa's credit and to thank her, she has done a superb job of providing programming in as many schools as she can. And going forward, we're looking at getting back to when we have before school and after school for our students and families in all 12 elementary schools. So currently, as Lisa explained, we have nine schools that have before-school care, and that serves 300 students across those nine schools. Seven of the 12 buildings, elementary buildings have after-school care, and that serves 233 students. You can imagine, that's a lot of help to our families who have competing forces of work and other commitments when students are needing before and after-school care. So we're grateful to Lisa. She informed us that she is, was, had prepared and would the next day be releasing a request for proposal to, with the goal in mind to have before and after-school care in all 12 of our elementary schools again next year. That's a very exciting thing. And I know our families in the schools who, for a while, have not had that, will be very appreciative of that as well. So we were delighted to hear that. The third topic was about the curriculum cycle. In the life of a school district, we know that studies happen in the various instructional and curricular areas, and the end result, not the whole thing, but the end result of that is that new instructional materials are chosen. And it's been quite a while since we've had a regular cycle that we could predictably say yes in seven years, or whatever the, it is for that, that particular curriculum area. We will study again. We'll keep refreshing our curriculum so that our students have absolutely the materials that they need, the best that's available to us at a price we can afford. And so we're delighted that both Mark Burns, the Executive Director of Secondary Education, and Lisa Tabacorst, the Executive Director of Elementary Education, have collaborated, and we now have a, an entire district-wide curriculum cycle that will be in place and will have us budgeting for that and have that regularity of review and update of our instructional materials. So very exciting thing. Then we were very pleased to have Lynn Glazer, who is our early childhood facilitator for the district, and Michelle Likt, who works with her in providing district leadership in early childhood. Both of them here tonight. Thank you for being here. And we received information from them about the Week of the Young Child, which was last week. Each day Lynn and Michelle has, had orchestrated that in all of our preschools, there was a theme for the day that brought a variety of activities and involvements, each of them very exciting. And you may, if you watch our website, you've seen some great pictures from those various themed days, and very good work. Thank you so much for that. In the process of learning about that, we also talked about where are we now in terms of serving preschoolers in our district? When we think of a district as a kindergarten through 12th grade, ours is not. It's a pre-kindergarten through 12th grade, and in this proportion. Currently, the district has 17 preschool programs. In other words, all 12 elementary schools, each has at least one preschool program within its pre-K through 5th grade programming, and five additional preschools are scattered across the district for a total of 17. That, that involves 250 preschoolers in programming for their learning. In addition, when we set up our four-year-old preschool programming some years ago, we included a community collaboration model that's alive and well and doing great things for the entirety of Dubuque as, as we go forward. It is, involves 19 community partners. So if you know of a preschool or a daycare, it's very likely, not 100%, but it's very likely that that program works with Lynn and Michelle and receives collaborative funding through our state preschool grant to service our, our four-year-old and early five-year-old children. So very exciting to see what's going on. Dubuque County School District has a stellar early childhood program, and we appreciate all those who work for it and work within it for the great work that they do. Dubuque is seen as a real leader in the state in terms of preschool programming. So we thank you for all you do, and the teachers and paraprofessionals who work in that program. And the second part of our meeting was working with nine policies. We're on a five-year rotation cycle in every district in the state, and that means that every five years, all policies are reviewed, reconsidered for what they include and how the language of that is explained. And so each meeting, we have a handful, or two handful, in this case, nine, policies that are reviewed and revised as needed to keep them up to the minute in terms of what they need to include. So we did that. Those things were improved, approved at the consent agenda, so you didn't hear us list them specifically. If you have interest in knowing what they are, we'll be happy to, to share that. Likewise, we reviewed the policy 5106, Days of Attendance for Graduating Seniors. As the school year goes on, and Amy has that tough decision to say, are we having school today? Are we able to? Are we able to have a full day of programming today and have our children be safe? Well, in the process of that, we all know that sometimes some of that gets interrupted. So on an annual basis, in April, the board looks at that number of days that, that students have not been in attendance. All students make up that time but for one group, and that's our graduating seniors.
Well, we'll see if we pass the motion. No, I'm just kidding.
Well, that's a very good point, very good point. So the board looks at that and says, annually, let's review that and see if we might excuse our seniors from making up those days. So that'll come before us here in a moment. So in addition to that, we heard from Ms. Ryan, who is our representative to the District Activities and Athletics Council, that great news, we're adding dance as an activity for all of our high school students who wish to be participating. That's a major step forward. I think you said, Ms. Ryan, that the middle school programs are very large in dance.
Yeah, very popular.
And so we're pleased to continue that now by adding the dance at the high school, dance activities. In addition to that, we will be looking, Superintendent Hawkins informed us, we'll be looking at raising the cost of some, some entrance fees for activities just out of necessity to keep our budget functional, but at a lower rate than our counterparts will be doing across the state. So the one thing I want to raise about that for anyone who's listening, Ms. Ryan brought us information as a reminder to say, senior citizens who are 65 or older will be, are able to still get a free activity pass. All they have to do is come to the forum, show proof of age, and show proof of residency in the district. So we urge you, we love when our community comes to our activities for our students. And so please take advantage of that. And as Ms. Ryan suggested, we'll be hoping to maybe have that displayed as a piece of information where those activities actually happen. So, next meeting, you're all welcome to come, May 2nd, 4:30 in the boardroom for the Educational Programs and Policy Committee.
Do you have your motion?
Oh, I do. Thank you. I move that the Board of Education excuse seniors from making up canceled school days.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education excuse seniors from making up canceled school days. Is there any discussion?
Huge sigh of relief by all of the seniors.
All the seniors are.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Don't see any. That motion carries. Thank you for that update. That brings us to new business.
I move the Board of Education approve the proclamation recognizing the Week of the Young Child and authorize the President and Secretary to sign on behalf of the board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the proclamation recognizing the Week of the Young Child and authorize the President and Secretary to sign on behalf of the board. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. So I'll read the proclamation. Whereas, the first year, first years of a child's life are the period of the most rapid brain development and lay the foundation for all future learning. And whereas, participation in high-quality early childhood education saves taxpayer dollars, makes working families more economically secure, and prepares children to succeed in school, earn higher wages and live healthier lives. And whereas, the Dubuque community's high-quality early childhood educators ensure that children, supported by families, have the early experiences they need for a strong foundation. And whereas, last week, the Dubuque Community School District celebrated strong early childhood programming and the important lifelong benefits that come from early learning. And whereas, the Dubuque Community School District urges all members of our community to support efforts that increase children and families' access to high-quality early childhood education. Now therefore, I, Kate Parks, on behalf of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education, do hereby proclaim April second through the eighth as the Week of the Young Child, signed this tenth day of April, 2023.
I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the proclamation recognizing the Week of the Young Child and authorize the President and Secretary to sign that proclamation on behalf of the board.
I think we did already. Thank you for reemphasizing how much we support this proclamation.
Double, double support.
That's okay, that's okay. It's very important.
You voted yes.
You did, you did. Making a good point.
All right. Is there any new, any other new business?
I just wanted to say in regard to my report about the middle school, that we will down the road here have the options, option one or two that the board will pick. The district leadership is doing some groundwork already for our project, and hopefully we'll be successful.
All right. More to come on that. Any board member or administrative issues?
I would say, I should have did this in the board salute, but I had the privilege of going to Lincoln Elementary School to do the teachers versus students basketball game, and thank you to the principal for inviting me. What an amazing experience to see the students, to connect with them. I got fouled a lot.
Ooh.
The referee there was questionable. To see the parents there too, having fun with it, and the Parent Teachers Association there as well. It was just overall amazing. Thank you to your leadership, and I strongly encourage all of us to continue to find ways to get inside the schools because the kids wants to see us, the teachers want to see us, so it's a beautiful thing. And again, thank you for inviting me to the building.
Great. Thank you.
So who won?
Yeah.
It was like I said, there was a questionable ref there, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Did end up in the tie.
There's an asterisk on the win, it sounds like.
Obviously, none.
All right. Thank you. Any other items? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.